And welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for nine AM Monday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twelve. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Steny. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Excuse me. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation, and we will be recognizing National Emergency Medical Services Week. And we are designating the week of May twentieth through twenty-six, two thousand and twelve, as National Emergency Medical Services Week. Whereas emergency medical services are vital to public health and access to quality emergency care, dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, nurses, medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and others; and whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas the members of the Henry County Fire Department engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills; and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Henry County Board of Commissioners that the week of May twentieth, two thousand and twelve shall be known as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme "More Than a Job: A Calling." And we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate ceremonies, programs, and activities. Be it further proclaimed that the Board of Commissioners wishes to express its appreciation for the vital contributions EMS personnel have made in our community this fourteenth day of May, two thousand and twelve, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And I see that we have a wonderful representation here this morning to receive the proclamation. And I know I speak for the Board when I say how much we do appreciate your dedication to our community. And probably every one of us on this Board knows someone or have a family member that has benefited from the excellent care that you have provided at some point to our loved ones. And words are not enough to express our appreciation for all that you do. So I'd like for everyone to give them a round of applause, and then we're going to get a photograph. All right, if you guys would step up here, we'd like to present this to you. and schools and a request for approval of a memorandum of understanding. And our presenter is Dr. Pam Carter, Communities and Schools Executive Director. That's exhibit number one. And we have our Solicitor General Chuck Spahas, who is probably one of the most involved Solicitor Generals in the state of Georgia. Good morning.
Good morning. First of all, we want to begin talking about what Communities and Schools is. It's the nation's leading, community-based dropout prevention network empowering students to stay in school and achieve in life. It's the nation's fifth-largest youth-serving organization, and it's been in existence for over thirty years. Our vision for Communities and Schools is that all children succeed in school and in life. And so our mission is that we provide wraparound services that are available in our community to support our students and to make sure that they are successful in school as well as at home and in life after school. Communities and Schools serves 2.3 million students over the United States. Thirty-four hundred public schools are being served, twenty-five states, twelve state offices, and four hundred and seventy-two school districts. There are thirty-nine Communities and Schools local affiliates, and Communities and Schools of Henry County is one of those affiliates. There are also eighteen Communities and Schools performing learning centers. Communities and Schools' model is pretty simple. What we do is we place a site coordinator in our schools, and we do an assessment of the annual needs of the school and the basic needs for that particular school. So we don't do a cookie-cutter program. What we do is allow the program to be built around the needs of that particular school and the community of that school. From that assessment, we put in place the programs that are needed and the operations plan that we will have for the year. Now, because that plan is put in place at the beginning of the year, it doesn't mean that it has to stay that way. What we do is we monitor the progress of the plan, and we can make changes monthly if needed. And then, of course, at the end of the year, we provide a report, and then we make adjustments there as well. So what we do is we create a community of support. You have your site coordinator. It's the person that we have on-site that is our eyes and ears for the community. And so then they meet with the administrative staff to get the needs of the school, and then they go back to our main office, and we talk about the resources that are available in our community and which resources would be best suitable for that school. And then we do the implementation from there. In other words, what we do is we enlist and facilitate community partnerships: faith-based organizations, human services, health services, enrichment opportunity with businesses, employment and career services, juvenile justice, mentors, tutors, and volunteers. And those individuals help us conduct what's needed in our schools. CIS schools experience consistent improvements in performance on state-mandated assessments for math compared to non-CIS schools. We're the only organization that has been evaluated by the clearinghouse for the federal government for nonprofits that provide interventions for dropouts. From that evaluation, we were the only ones that showed that we actually work. There's evidence that Communities and Schools work, if it is implemented with high fidelity. CIS has positive benefits on student and school-level dropout rates, graduation rates, attendance, and academic performance. CIS is unique in its ability to lower dropout rates and increase on-time graduation rates compared to other dropout prevention programs. It demonstrates a reduction in student-level dropout rates that is nearly three times the what works clearinghouses threshold for substantively important effects. CIS is most effective when it is implemented, again, as I stated, with high fidelity. High fidelity includes the following core elements: school-based site coordinators, comprehensive school and student-level needs assessments, community asset assessment and identification of potential partners, annual plans for prevention and intervention services and resources, appropriate combination of Level One and Level Two student services, data collection and evaluation and monitoring of adjusted services. Now, let me talk a little bit about those two types of services. The Level One services are those services that students may need such as dental care, medical assistance, if they are in need of glasses, any of those things that would hinder them from coming to school and being successful. If you have a student who is in school that has one of those needs, it's very hard for that student to concentrate or to be on task in order to learn. So what we do is we provide those types of services for those students who are not able to get those services. Their parents don't have the funds to do so. They may have insurance, but they may not have the funding to provide for the co-pay. So we provide those resources for those students so they can then come to school and be successful. Our Level Two services are a little bit more in-depth, in that we look at the student's academic achievement or lack thereof, and then we provide the intervention programs that are needed there at the school level to allow that student to be successful. CIS model is a viable solution for achieving academic success across grade levels, elementary, middle, and high, a variety of settings in the rural suburban or urban area, and various student populations, Hispanic, African-American, and white. So our question now is where is CIS Henry? Where CIS Henry is in the process of building relationships with stakeholders such as the Henry County School System, Connecting Henry, Henry Chamber of Commerce, and county leaders and local government. We currently coordinate the Youth Workforce Program that provides GED instruction for students ages sixteen to twenty-four. We provide them work internships for those students with our local businesses. We provide mentoring and career pathway sessions. We provide cultural and diversity activities as well as assistance with childcare for those students. We have identified the needs of the youth in our community through meeting with our community stakeholders. Four things that we know we need to work on is to increase the graduation rate. Last year, we had six hundred and fourteen students who did not graduate from Henry County school systems. That's a small number when you look at that we educate over forty thousand students in our system. However, that's still a number that we want to see decrease and not increase. We want to promote more parent involvement and parent engagement. That's very important, that we educate our parents about what our students are doing and what's available for them as far as the resources, as far as showing them how to get onto a program called Infinite Campus to check the grades of their students and the progress, how to be able to communicate with their students' teachers on a regular basis. Also, we are in need of after-school programs for students in middle schools. As you know, we have after-school programs for our elementary students, but when we get to after-school programs for middle school, there are no programs. So we want to provide some after-school programs for those students at their base school. And then we want to look at the school readiness and literacy programs that we have. We know that there is a need for more early childcare and Head Start programs in our Well, we have an action plan for the two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year. The school system has partnered with us and has provided some in-con for us that would allow us to employ CIS graduation coaches that will be placed in all eleven middle schools beginning August, two thousand and twelve. We have, looking at our graduation rate, we have a Youth on the Move Youth Workforce Summit that will be held at Henry County High School June thirteenth and fourteenth. The purpose of this summit is to generate some engagement of our students to prepare themselves for the workforce as well as to prepare themselves for college or technical school by providing them some skills that they will need as far as writing a resume, how to fill out an application, and giving them some interviewing techniques. We'll also provide for them computer lab time with individuals who are experts in that area. Ms. Ringer from the Ringer School of Excellence will be there to facilitate this particular summit. And Ms. Ringer was employed by the state of Georgia a couple of years ago when they did the Georgia Workforce. She employed over eight thousand students over our state. In July, we have a parent expo that will take place at the Atlanta Motor Speedway, July the twenty-first, from ten AM into three PM. We have partnered along with the Atlanta Motor Speedway, Connecting Henry, our school system, and the Henry County Chamber of Commerce to make this event happen. We are in the process of developing after-school programs. When developing these programs and thinking about which ones we needed in our schools, it took the time to sit down with our principals in our middle schools to see what were their needs. And oftentimes, the first needs we think of are reading and math, and that's simply because those are our target areas for the CRCT that students need to pass reading and math. But that's changing somewhere. Now they're going to look at reading, math, social studies, and science. And so with that in mind, many principals are saying they're in need of having more robotic teams. Now, we have some of those that are in our high schools but not any in middle schools. They're in need of a Toastmasters group that would allow our students to learn how to speak publicly, how to get before individuals, not just in their school but in our state, so they can begin to compete with other students. Scholar Shots, which is a program that will allow us to include parent mentoring groups along with mentoring groups for our students, so to connect them. And they also will provide remediation, instruction in math, and language arts. And then we will have youth group counseling, counseling for anger management, how to deal with stress, how to learn how to get along with your classmates. Those types of counseling sessions are needed. They will have reading groups that are engaged, students are engaged with these programs because they're not just using a book. They will be using Kindle Fires, something, technology, bringing more technology into our schools. And then other core subject tutoring that will be available for these students as well. We're also in collaboration with McIntosh Trail's Head Start. McIntosh Trail Head Start is located in Jackson, Georgia, but they hold the slots for Head Start for Henry County. So we have been in negotiation with Ms. Brown, who is the executive director for McIntosh Trails, to begin talking about expansion for our Head Start in McDonough, tentatively date for August, two thousand and twelve. Yes, sir.
I'm pretty sure everybody on the Board knows that there's been a push for Boys and Girls Club. It sounds like CIS already has an infrastructure in place, and now you're saying that you can do after-school program in the middle schools, and you're focused on early education as well. Is there a possibility that you can do the same thing in terms of after-school programs in the high schools?
Yes. The point for Communities and School is that our first place to do implementation with recommendation from our school superintendent is that we start with the middle schools because that's where all of those students are fed into our high schools. And so we want to begin with middle schools for the after-school programs. However, there will be some other activities like the Youth Summit that's directly for high school students. We have more activities and events like that happen.
Okay.
Now, when we talk about funding for CIS, because we know we talk about a lot of programs, and then the first thing we think about is how are these programs going to be funded? And where does the funding come from? Well, CIS is a part of our state budget, so we receive state funding every year from CIS Georgia, which is our main office for each affiliate in our state. We provide, we're also given the opportunity to apply for federal and public invitational grants, and those are grants that you can't just find them on the website, but they have to actually come and seek you out to allow you to apply. We receive individual donors, people who are interested in education and want to see the success of education in our community. We have individuals that give to CIS in that manner. Also, corporate sponsors. We have a lot of businesses and corporations that are a part of our community, and so we look to them to give some sponsors, some resources for this program. Also, we receive in-cons. In-cons from our school system, from our county, from other entities in our community. And then we also host fundraising events and activities to allow us to come up with resources for our programs. I'm proud to say that CIS Henry is a recipient of the Whitehead Foundation Grant, and that grant will begin August, two thousand and twelve, and it will run through August, two thousand and fourteen, I mean, yes, August, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen, that school year. So we have received funding from the Whitehead Foundation for three years that will allow us to implement some programs.
I appreciate y'all letting us come today. I'm here representing the actual Board of Directors for Communities and Schools of Henry County. And just to kind of briefly say, you know, we started this journey almost two years ago. Most of you here were participants in the retreat that was sponsored by the Chamber where we went and we concentrated on our education system, our school system, and what is it we wanted to accomplish as a community as related to our school system. Well, we're here today to tell you what the boots-on-the-ground effect of that is going to be. We came away from that project with a true understanding of what we need in this community to take our school system from what is a really good school system to a great school system. And Communities and Schools, again, is that boots-on-the-ground. One of the things that we have seen as we narrowed in on Communities and Schools as our primary target to accomplish this mission was that they're so well-respected in the country and in the state. There's the credence that comes with being associated with them already opened doors to some funding sources. But once those funding sources started to evaluate what we were doing and look at this community and look at Communities and Schools and the Chamber's initiative and what our Board of Education had done and what have you, they're very excited about the fact that this is a community the size of this school system and the fact that all the stakeholders are coming together as one, that that is what is attractive to the fund holders because they have seen programs fail before because everybody failed to get together. That's really where we're at. This community has come together as a whole, and now these Communities and Schools is going to help us actually start affecting and helping the children in this community. So thank you for letting us come today. This memorandum of understanding that was referenced by the chairman simply acknowledges the existence of Communities and Schools, recognizes the cooperation that's required between this body and our Board, and I thank you for letting us come, and we'll field any questions.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to make a comment because we have been, the E-Squared Initiative is going to fold into the Communities and Schools, and a lot of citizens may say, well, why does the Board of Commissioners have an interest in the Board of Education? But one of the things that we've come to realize, and some of us have known for some time now, is there's a direct correlation between economic development and a good school system. Potential companies that seek to locate to a community, they look to the school system. They want a well-trained workforce to assume those jobs. And so we all have a stake in that, and certainly we recognize the need for more business in this county, especially in light of the fact that we're looking at our budget for this upcoming year, and we see that we're so heavily dependent on residential taxes that we need to do everything we can to be more competitive, to attract more business and industry to this community. The other thing that affects us that goes beyond even that is the cost of social services. We had Dr. Dolinger from the Metro Chamber gave a very eye-opening presentation, and he talked about the economic impact to people who do not graduate from high school. And statistically, it costs about $2 million per person for social services for a high school dropout over their lifetime. And that certainly has a huge impact on the community as well. And so, you know, I'm very excited about Communities and Schools, and I'm excited that the Board of Commissioners had an opportunity to really partner with the Board of Education because this is, we're one Henry, and this is everybody's responsibility. And so I'm very excited about this program and looking forward to ways that we can continue to partner with the Board of Education in the future. But thank you for this presentation this morning. Mr. Holmes?
With regards to funding, the after-school program and the early education program, are those programs currently funded, or are you seeking funding?
We have some funding for those programs. The Whitehead Foundation Grant will provide a great deal of funding for us.
Okay. Are you seeking any funds from the CDBG grant that the county is going to be awarded?
Any funds that we could receive from that grant would be appreciated.
You know, I get excited. I mean, BJ said it correctly, is that property values are directly correlated to how good the school system is. And you guys, every time I see what y'all are doing and the reputation that Communities and Schools has, we're very blessed. Because one of the things we found from the Education and Economics Task Force that many in the room were involved with was that we had a lot of duplication of services, or we had people trying to reinvent the wheel and trying to start a brand-new program that we already had somebody already doing within the community. The slide that we always showed is we had, you know, arrows going in many different directions. You guys, as even Commissioner Holmes mentioned, y'all kind of help align that. Y'all have the infrastructure already in place, and this isn't just the K through twelve. You're trying to do it on the front end, you're trying to do it on the back end, and that's what we need as a community to help us fix the property values and everything else. And I'm just so happy that y'all really align all those resources together, and we're kind of, we really are blessed as a community to have you be a part and have a reputation that Communities and Schools has here in Henry County.
Anything else? Mr. Holder?
I have a question and a comment. The first one is a question, and Ms. Carter, you had mentioned that there were six hundred and fourteen students that did not, that were dropouts out of forty thousand. That doesn't sound like a great percentage, but let's talk about eligible graduates of that senior class. Now, how many eligible graduates did that six hundred and fourteen come from?
Well, for last year, there were over fifteen thousand students who were set for graduation at the beginning of August, two thousand and eleven. And so out of that fifteen thousand, six hundred and fourteen was the number. Now, that's not a lot, that is not a large number. However, we don't want it to increase. That's only about seventeen percent of that student body.
It's a lot larger than six hundred and fourteen out of forty thousand.
Exactly.
That's what I wanted to get at. And the next comment that I want to make, and it goes along with what the chairman and also others have said, and I've said many times, and I think Mr. Spahas can back this up, it's much more cost-effective to educate than it is to incarcerate, and that's his business. But it costs so much less to educate than it is to keep, to house our inmates right next door. And plus, what has it done to the person? What has it done to the communities in making it a much more safer place to live? So all in all, it is much more cost-effective to educate than to incarcerate.
Mr. Bowman?
I have a question. I have a constituent in my district that sends me basically every few weeks kind of an update in it. And her updates, it seems that, I noticed that we're going into the element, I mean, into the middle schools, which it seems that what she continually talks about with me is that the literacy program prior to either getting, you know, at the K-five level and prior to that, and you kind of went through it pretty fast, and I didn't want to stop you, but I noticed you had something in there for some literacy programs for, you know, K-five and that area. Would you expand on that just a little bit? Because it's important, if a lot of it starts prior to them getting to the first and second grade, then, you know, what do you have, or what is CIS, what are they going to do to kind of help that particular part of the program?
Okay. For Communities and Schools, again, we're not a cookie cutter. So when we came into Henry County as an organization, we listened to the community, and one of the things that continued to be said over and over is that that early care, that Head Start piece was quite important. Being able to have the opportunity to sit in on the E-Squared Initiative committee meetings, knowing that there is a committee that continuously sits down and talks about what can we do for school readiness. And so in looking in that, I did some research to see where was Henry County when we talk about Head Start. And we only have sixty-four slots for our county. Those sixty-four slots are housed in Locust Grove in a daycare facility. Now, Locust Grove, we know from talking to Ms. Brown that she has parents that drive as far as Stockbridge and Ellinwood to bring their students down to Locust Grove, to that particular center. And so when we look at expanding, we have to look at two things. We have to look at the number of slots that we have available and what are the chances of us possibly spreading those slots. And then we have to look at, is there funding for expansion? Now, this funding for expansion is not something that we can navigate or change. That's coming from the federal government. And so from speaking to the collaborative director for Bright Star, right from the start, she has notified me that there are no funds available from the federal government to do any expansion. So what we can do is work with Ms. McIntosh to see how we can expand at least into McDonough, into a facility here that will allow us to house some Head Start early care. And in talking with her, she's open to moving at least one early care class to McDonough. She has a three-year-old class that she's willing to move, as well as she has four Georgia pre-K classes that she's willing to move in some respect to McDonough. And so that's how we have been able to collaborate on that end. Also, knowing that from, right from the start, there is a push to make sure that they have a curriculum in place that begins with the early Head Start program, and that's a common core. And all of us have And all of us have probably heard about the Common Core curriculum where the curriculum is pretty much the same from one state to the next. So if we have students that transfer in, say, from Alabama to Georgia, then they're not that far off base. What has happened in the past is that the scope and sequence of our curriculum may have been neons ahead of what that student came in with or vice versa. And so we have a hard time of closing that gap, if you will, for that student. And so we want to make sure that we can tackle that from the beginning, beginning with Head Start, the Georgia Pre-K and, and the early care programs. And so we are in negotiation with the School Readiness Department of Bright From the Start to talk about how we can be the first ones to pilot that Common Core standard initiative that they have in place. And so that's how we are going about trying to address that need.
Well, hopefully we'll be able to, I'm sorry, hopefully we'll be able to help out maybe some with our CBG grants simply because I understand the need in Locust Grove, there's probably a need in Hampton, I would imagine there's, I know there's a need in McDonough, but also the north end of the county, I think was, I'm sure there are those there that would love to get into something that simply couldn't drive to Locust Grove, you know, so maybe there's some things that, that we can look at that might, would help along those lines. I was just curious as to, I'd gotten the information and I read it from this particular constituent and, and, you know, I, you know, I read it but I look at it and I say, well, you know, we don't have any money for that. I mean, and we don't, I mean, we don't have money for hardly anything, but I was just curious about that and I appreciate that.
And we have looked at the north end. Our first tentative proposal was for a location in McDonough as well as one in Stockbridge, in the Fairview-Ellenwood area. However, when we looked at the number of slots that we have for Head Start and there's no room for expansion, then we could only look at possibly one location for next year.
Thank you.
Funds are for those areas of, the areas of greatest need and there are no areas that have greater need than the city of Stockbridge and the city of McDonough. So I hope you can make those areas priority if we're able to allocate funds from the CDBG to your program.
Thank you.
And if I could, to just address, one of the reasons we went with communities and schools is because it's ours. It belongs to us, to this community. Their program, the programs that they bring to us, of course, are programs that we duplicate or replicate from other systems that have worked, but just like our need here, as we find additional sources of revenue, then we can concentrate on those, we can replicate these, and again, this is a, this is a fluid motion that belongs to us as a community and, and as we identify those needs as priority and we can identify funding sources, that's where we're going first.
Ms. Carter, you said the 14% rate, that's, that's the dropout rate we have in our county, correct?
Seventeen percent for last year.
Seventeen percent. How does that rank us stake-wise? Where do we rank?
Well, we're only comparable in size to Atlanta Fulton System as far as the, the population. Last year, they had over 1,200 students that did not graduate, and so that puts us second to them. And so the plan and the, and the vision from our superintendent is that by 2018, all of our students are graduating, so we have a 100% graduation rate. With the programs that we have in place, we're sure that we'll be able to catch all of those students. As mentioned, we have the Youth Workforce Program and what that has done is it's allowed us to build a relationship with our counselors and our graduation coaches that are in the high school to go after that 614 so they're not a burden on our community. We go and we find those students and we say, come in, we have GED classes that are available for you free of charge, we have, you have the opportunity to come in and get some soft skills and have the opportunity to work with the business in our community. So now they have some self-esteem that's been built there, they have an opportunity to get that GED diploma, and then we don't just stop there. We sit down and we do the career pathway planning, planning where we sit down and we say, now you have your GED, is it that you just want to get a job in our community? Is there a particular place you want to work that we may be partners with that we can talk to them and get you an internship? That internship is not something that the business owner pays for, that's something that's paid for through our grant. And so we give them pretty much what you would consider free labor for eight weeks, and that gives them an opportunity to see if this student would be a, a good fit for them. And it also gives the student the opportunity to see if this is really the direction that they want to move in. After that period of time, if they're not hired on permanently, we talk to them about going to Southern Crescent Technical College, and we have a relationship that we've built with them that they will allow our students to come and be enrolled that first semester with no fee charged to them or to our program. And so that's a partnership that we've been able to put together. We're also in negotiation with Clayton State and Mercer University to do the same thing because they are both a part of, a part of our community in some way. We have Mercer that's here and then we have Clayton State that is one of our dual enrollment institutions with our school system. So we work hand-in-hand with that.
Don't we have some type of night academy at Union Grove?
They have a night academy, but that's particularly for those students who are in school, and so what they try to do is give them an opportunity for any credits that they have, they didn't get, for example, if they failed math that first semester, they can go to that night academy and they can take that math that second semester in the night school.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Holder?
One comment, and this is really not relative to what you're saying, but in essence it is. Be mindful of a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the Head Start was located in Locust Grove, which it is, that there is no poverty, it does not meet the 15% poverty level, there's no opportunity zone in Locust Grove, but that's where Head Start is, and it's all relative to socioeconomic, is it not? No doubt about it. So my point is, I just wanted to remind people one more time about the maps that were presented to us and that one agency says it is, one agency says it's not. So I think Brian Preston mentioned the fact of coordinating and coming with a mechanism that could coordinate things together. Obviously, in the, from the federal to the state, we don't know whether poverty exists in this county because there's none that showed up in Locust Grove, there's not a poverty area there, I'm thankful for that, but there's also no opportunity zone there either, so just couldn't help but bring that back to the board's attention.
And we appreciate you reminding us of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Preston?
Well, we're all trying to figure out the poorest community. Statistically, I feel like I have to go on record is that actually Hampton has the highest poverty rate within the county. I don't like that, I wasn't trying to draw attention to it because that's why the opportunity credits went there first is because our, our poverty rates were close to 20%. But I like to look at the positives of how we're moving forward and you guys are incredible resources. I also like, they'll have private money coming in too with the grants, and this time as Commissioner, as Reed has said, that money's not laying around, it's nice to see other people having to have skin in the game too, so it's not all of it just about us too.
Well, if there are no further questions or comments, you have before you a memorandum of understanding between Henry County and the Communities and Schools of Henry County Incorporated, and I will entertain a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Holmes, is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on at this time to public safety. We have a resolution requesting authorization to accept a donation from Walmart and our presenter is Chief Bill Lacy of the Fire Department, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning. I knew all those paramedics, EMTs or whatever were not here for your presentation, so hopefully that didn't hurt your feelings.
They're not, actually, they've, they're rather busy this morning, so they've already run a call since they left here. On behalf of those, before we go into this next item, on behalf of those 271 EMTs and paramedics, firefighter EMTs and paramedics that we have working for Henry County Fire Department, I would like to thank you for your proclamation this morning and your recognition of EMS Week. Those folks are busy, as I mentioned, they're going to answer about 18,000 EMS calls in this county this year, so I thank you very much for recognizing them this morning. The item that you see before you is for acceptance of a grant that we, that we applied for from the Walmart Foundation, and the acceptance of this grant is for some enhancement of some training activities that we have going on, some training props that we're actually in the process of building on our training lot at Station One at 664 Industrial Boulevard, and also some enhancement to, to classroom facilities that we have. This is 100% grant, as I mentioned, it's in the amount of $1,500. It is on behalf of three Walmart stores in Henry County, the 3201 store in McDonough, the 3402 store in Hudson Bridge, Stockbridge, on Hudson Bridge and Stockbridge, and then the 5709 store which is in Locust Grove.
See, we're never going to question about this item? If not, you have a resolution before you, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Stamen and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Holder? Oh, Mr. Holder would like you to stay there for a moment.
Just a comment, and of course, we didn't have an opportunity while the EMTs were here earlier, but I wanted to pass this along, and during my time sitting here on the board, there has, I have never received a negative comment about the professionalism and the care that the EMTs have given citizens throughout the county and especially with the people that I've talked to. They need to know that and I wish you'd pass it along to them because that means a lot. You can't say that for the entire Fire Department or the entire Police Department, that, that's not the point, but the, the paramedics, the people that go out to take care of these people at 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning or under whatever condition, I've never had a negative comment, and to me, that says volumes because it's hard to please everybody. And I just wanted to pass that along to you, Chief.
Thank you very much, and I will pass that along to the board. Thank you.
Thank you. We're moving on to human services and we have a resolution requesting approval of the 2012 Henry County Transit System Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy. Our presenter is Tara Eberhart, HR Director, Exhibit Number Three. Good morning.
Good morning. Members of the board, I bring to you today a resolution requesting approval of the 2012 Henry County Transit System Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy.
Does any board member have a question or comment? Excuse me, if not, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder and a second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Excuse me, at this time, we're moving on to purchasing. We have a resolution requesting award of a bid for right-of-way mowing services and our presenter is Rod Gray of the, our Purchasing Director, Exhibit Number Four. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. The first item I have this morning is related to sealed bid 1215090711, which is a request for right-of-way mowing services. The recommendation is to award this contract to True Green Land Care at an annual cost of $255,360.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Holmes?
My question is regarding, you have this extrapolated out, my question is regarding labor at 295,000. Is that the salary? Are those salaries or those are costs that we're going to have anyway, correct?
That is correct.
So where, where's the savings?
Sir?
Where, where's the savings if, I know it says we're going to save, save quite a bit of money, but where's the savings unless we're not going to have those salaries?
If you add up all those costs shown, if you add up the labor, fuel, maintenance and our equipment replacement cost, our annual cost for that same process is $408,575. If we contract that out at $255,360, the difference is the savings of that $153,000.
But the salaries, I mean, we will continue to pay those, that $295,000 salary, correct? So...
There would, there would be no need in that.
So, am I hearing, are we looking at layoffs or...
I'm just presenting the bid, sir.
Okay. All right, no more questions.
I'll add to...
Madam Chair.
So how was, how was this done in the past? I think is what Commissioner Holmes is, how, how have we paid for this in the past? Is it done in-house through our existing people?
That is correct. It is an in-house service done at DOT today.
So if, and that's what I think Commissioner Holmes was getting at, is if we've done this in-house and now we're hiring these, this outside service, so this, the alternative is we either have to hire more people or do this or...
No, sir. No, sir. We were, we were asked to look at this service if it could be done by outside services and would there be any cost savings, and that's why this was done. We're currently doing it, but we were asked to look at this and see if it would be any cost savings to the county.
The labor is currently around 65, 70% here, and in order to achieve those savings, we would have to subtract the labor out of this equation. So I'm trying to see where the actual cost is, if we're going to continue to pay that labor cost and also add in a new contract with True Green, we actually, we actually increase the cost, correct? Or am I seeing something different than anybody else?
If y'all award this contract, we would not be spending the labor nor the fuel or the maintenance of those equipment or the replacement cost of that equipment there would be need in doing it. If we contracted out the services, Commissioner, we wouldn't need those.
For mowing, but we would still pay the cost for those employees to do other things, right? So we're not actually...
We would, we would be retaining other employees to do the rest of the work orders, but there would be a reduction in force if we go this avenue.
Okay. That's what I was trying to figure out.
Any other questions? Mr. Holder?
It says, obviously, this is right-of-way mowing, and I'm going to direct this to Mr. Terry McMichael. I know there are, there are other mowing jobs that are done outside of the right-of-way. Does this only include the right-of-way? Yes, sir. This does not include any of what tim cuts in front of buildings, this is just along the roadways, strictly the roadways. Understand. Other question I would have, that that will stay under parks and rec, is that what you're saying? The, the mowing of the parks and the, of course, public buildings, all that stays under parks and rec, correct? That is correct. Okay. The next question I would have would be the fact of the bids that came in. When you look at True Green, loving contracting and Clear River Construction, the low bidder is half what the high bidder is. And I'm not saying that it's not a legitimate bid, certainly not, but I think it would require some monitoring to be sure that we do get what we're, we're bidding because somebody that bids half what somebody else bids on the same project, I think needs some, some monitoring. Do you agree, Mr. Bowman?
Well, yeah, I mean, when you look at it, it's actually half of the other two. And so it's kind of, it's hard to understand how they can do it that much cheaper.
I hope it's a great bid, but I'm just saying, half of what the other two bidders were, and the other two bidders were in some $8,000 of one another, makes you, makes you wonder.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution for the annual contract for right-of-way mowing and I'll entertain a motion. You got a question, Mr. Preston?
And I don't mean to, I'm just trying to make sure because I feel like the money is, is so tight that we just need to make sure everything that we're doing. Terry, how did we, we pay for this all in-house? I mean, is it not going to get done if we can't do this? Because I'm with Commissioner Holmes is that if we're paying a department to do this, if you add the, the 255 looks like a great deal, and I, and I think it's great that we've gotten this great deal, but if you add the existing labor that we're already paying plus the 255, is this an increase? That's what I'm trying to still get past, the original point that Commissioner Holmes brought up.
No, sir. This would require a reduction in force. That labor, we would not keep the same amount of people we have.
That's, that's the missing part. Okay. That makes sense. Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. If not, you have a resolution and I'll look for a motion. Anybody like to make a motion on this item?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to table this until, for 30 days, until we can review these again.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Holder to table. Is there a second? Okay, we have a second by... Okay, we have a second by Mr. Bowman. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of tabling the item? And all opposed? Motion carries four zero with Bowman, Holder, Stamey, and Preston in favor of tabling, and Commissioner Holmes opposed. Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting authorization to purchase asphalt for approved resurfacing contracts, and that's Exhibit Number Five.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. As you stated in your introduction, this, there's a list of projects that have been submitted. The projects have been approved by the Board, and the contractor for the services has been approved by the Board through an annual contract. However, the actual purchases of the asphalt exceeds the Board approval limit. And so we've included the list of projects and the estimated asphalt cost for the Board, so that as funds become available, and as they are reached on the list of priority, these projects will already be pre-approved, so they do not have to be brought to the Board individually. So the request is to approve the purchase of asphalt from an annual contract vendor, C.W. Matthews, for the list of projects in the attachment.
I just, I have a question. When does C.W. Matthews' annual contract expire?
It expires in June, and this, this will be rebid. Most likely, this contract will have to be extended to accommodate the rebid. If the contract is rebid, and a new vendor has awarded this contract, I would bring these projects back to the Board to approve it with the new vendor. So it's not a promise to purchase this from C.W. Matthews. It's, it's authorizing TND and Purchasing to make these asphalt purchases from C.W. Matthews as long as they are the annual contract holder for the county.
Okay. I know that I have received some correspondence on several occasions from another vendor who says that we are paying too much for asphalt.
Yes, ma'am.
So I don't know if there's any way to hold up until it's rebid or not.
My recommendation would be to authorize this, because the work that he's doing is going to continue, no matter who the contract holder is. But that Purchasing understands the priority of the need to rebid this contract and obtain the best pricing in terms for the county. And I can assure you that we will do that. And if the contract holder changes, as I stated, we'll bring that to the Board for approval with the new vendor.
Well, I understand that, too. But if there's any way that we can somewhat delay some of this for a cost savings, if that's indeed true, then, I mean, I have no...
I'm unsure of the priority, ma'am. I think that...
Madam Terry, it would be very difficult to delay some of this right now. For instance, we're out there working on, I believe, Airline.
Airline.
And some of these roads, we've already done full-depth reclamation on, and we need to finish putting the asphalt on top of them, or literally, they're going to be running on dirt roads. So for us to delay right now would be difficult.
Well, and I'm not saying the ones that are currently in, in progress, but any that you may be beginning in the next four, three to four weeks, you may want to delay until we rebid, if at all possible, especially if there could be a cost savings recognized. That's just a thought. I'm not saying, I'm not saying not approve this and finish what you're doing now. I'm saying for any future projects that are coming up in the next three to four weeks, you might want to consider waiting to get started on those until we rebid this asphalt contract. Because the vendor that contacted me on several occasions was adamant that he could beat this cost of what we're currently paying for asphalt. And I know we are literally looking at maximizing every penny that we have to get the most cost benefit for our citizens. So that was just a comment that I wanted to make on that. Ms. Wiley?
Yes, Madam Chairman. In light of what Mr. Gray just stated, do we need to put something in the "now therefore be resolved" clause to clarify that this is just during the term of the existing annual contract?
A certain kind of provision, yes.
Because I think this could be read as extending that somehow indirectly. And I don't think, from what you said, that's your intent.
No. The only reason we would extend is if we couldn't get the bid results back before the contract was over.
And you would come back to the Board for that extension approval?
Yes, ma'am, we would.
Okay. Well, then perhaps utilizing the "therefore be resolved" clause, we could add a phrase that says, utilizing the existing annual contract with C.W. Matthews, which is good, but not extending it. Something just so we will know for certain that we're not inadvertently extending that contract by implication to that vendor.
I see your point. No, the extension would 100% not be related to this purchase request. It would be to serve an administrative purpose.
The final?
Yes, sir.
If you read this, if you read this resolution, it says annual contract to C.W. Matthews. If we renew this, we're basically giving them a contract for one year.
I think it could, I think that someone could construe it that way. And I think that, in light of what Rod said, we don't, we want to make it clear that that's not what we're doing.
Annual needs to be taken out, period.
Or maybe the existing contract.
With the existing contract, which is scheduled to, but in no way an extension of that contract.
But could we also go a little further and add a 30-day cancellation? Either party cancel it, cancel it in 30 days. Otherwise, you're awarding C.W. Matthews an annual contract. And if I was in his situation, I would, I could hold your feet to the fire on this one here, because you're signing an annual contract.
I don't know what the existing contract says about the 30 days.
There's termination in the existing, there's a termination clause in the existing contract.
Do you know what it says? I haven't...
It's probably 60 days, would be my guess.
Would you like to table this item until tomorrow night, so that you have an opportunity to review the contract?
And then Rod and I can work out the language. Yeah, we can do that.
And make sure that the resolution's correct.
Yes.
And Mr. Stamey, would you like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion we table it until tomorrow night.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
The next item is under Planning and Zoning Services. We have a resolution to amend the current professional services contract with Mullen and Lonergan Associates Incorporated. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, Exhibit Number Six. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, members of the Board. On March 6th of 2012, the county entered into a contract with the consulting firm Mullen and Lonergan for the purpose of completing our consolidated plan and annual, five-year consolidated plan and annual action plan. The original contract was slated to be completed, or tentatively completed sometime in May. However, the county did move forward and request a 45-day extension from HUD, which we received. So therefore, our contract timeframe has been extended. So with that, we've asked that, to extend our contract with Mullen and Lonergan to extend through August, August 31st. There's no cost associated with this amendment, simply for time of performance only. So we're requesting authorization to amend the contract, to amend the contract time.
Okay. You have a resolution before you to amend and extend the contract for up to an additional 45 days. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Holmes?
Can you just give an update on where we are in the process with the CDBG?
Sure. Currently, we have had, we've held one of the, we've held one public hearing meeting, thus far, as held on March 22nd. Prior to that, we have a number of meetings with community stakeholders, at which time we brought them in, our consultant brought them in, met with them, and got input from the stakeholders throughout the community. And we met over 50 individuals. And subsequently, also took additional comments during the public hearing process. Consultant has kind of worked with gathering that information, gathered information we required from the stakeholders, as well as comments that have been received from the public, and is in the process of drafting the final annual action plan and consolidated plan. We have a draft prepared, bringing that to the Board. Subsequently, we've gotten some comments back already, but we're looking to finalize that draft plan within the next day or so. Because right now, we're scheduled to have that plan go on public viewing, beginning on May 16th. Requirements for it to be on public viewing for 30 days. And during that timeframe, we will be, we'll hold an additional, a second and a third public hearing as well. Both of those public hearings will be held on June 5th. One at the morning Board of Commissioners meeting at 9:00, and another one, the evening of June 5th at 6:30, another public hearing, to again allow public to provide input. We'll continue to take that input, and during the 30-day reviewing period, forward that input back on to the Commissioners. And we are right now scheduled for a final adoption of the plan on June 18th. To have, and again, we are required to have it in HUD's hands prior to June 29th. So right now, we will, the next big step in the process will be the 30-day, once we, it's completion of the 30, of the plan itself, the consolidated plan, and that'll be going on for public display, beginning this Wednesday, for 30 days. And we'll have that on, it'll be on our website, it'll be located at city halls, as well as other public facilities, recreation centers, libraries, senior centers, for public viewing. And people can also provide input on the plan, the draft plan as well, during that, during that review period.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the 45-day extension, and I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Mr. Holmes, a second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. County Manager, you have a resolution requesting approval to enter into an agreement with the FAA regarding air traffic services during the 2012 NASCAR race, and that's Exhibit Number Seven. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. The resolution is to enter into an agreement with the FAA regarding air traffic service for this upcoming race in September. This is done every, every year. Clayton did it. We did it last year, just after taking the, purchasing the airport. And we're required to have this for safety of the citizens, the visitors, and the race teams. Excuse me, during the weekend. This will be from Sunday till 1:00 Monday morning. Answer any questions if anybody has a...
Any Board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the agreement, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Ms. Norsworth, anyone sign up for public comment? County Manager, anything for public session? Ms. County Attorney? Upcoming meetings and events. Tomorrow, May 15th, at 6:30 PM, we have a regular Board meeting. Monday, May 21st, at 9:00 AM, we have a called meeting. Monday, May 28th, all county offices will be closed in observance of the Memorial Day holiday. Monday, May 30th, at 9:00 AM, we have a called meeting. Monday, June 4th, at 9:00 AM, and Tuesday, June 5th, at 9:00 AM, these are both regular Board meetings. We do not have a need today for an executive session, so if there's no further business to come before the Board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Stamey?
These dates don't line up. 28th to 30th, two days, two Monday, back to back.
That's right, they don't. We need to check the dates on the...
Because that Monday to 20, is Monday the 28th?
It's Wednesday, May 30th.
Wednesday, is that 30th?
Wednesday, May 30th. Okay, that's the correct. Monday, May 28th, all county offices are closed for Memorial Day. And Wednesday, May 30th, at 9:00 AM, we have a called meeting. I'm sorry. All right, did they fill out a form?
No, she's doing it now.
Okay. You, thank you for bringing that to my attention. All right, we have one citizen that has signed up for public comment, Darla Rice. The Ladies of Mallard's Landing, correct? Okay, if you could step to the microphone, and if you would state your name and address for the record, please. And you have five minutes. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Darla Rice. My address is 3345 Bill Gardner Parkway. Like many in our community, I work, and it's difficult for me to make it to the public libraries during the now very limited hours. Frustrated, I mentioned it to the Ladies of Mallard's Landing Book Group, and they all expressed frustration as well. Many of us retold stories of fond memories visiting the local library as a young child, fostering for what each of us would become a lifelong love of reading. As we began to talk to our neighbors, we soon realized that we weren't the only ones that felt frustrated. Our community decided that we needed to make a difference. After all, libraries are a vital tool and a cornerstone to any thriving community. And it dawned on me, when we were watching that CIS presentation, there was one key element missing, and that was our local libraries. They're already there, they're intact, and they have the ability to be able to reach out to our young children. So we're going to step up and make a connection with them as well. Mallard's Landing agreed to do a few things, and one of them was to sponsor summer programs at Locust Grove in Hampton. And I'm proud to say that to date, we've now donated $1,200. So we're actually stepping up to the plate. We also wanted to foster communication between libraries, schools, and the general public. We had a meeting with Assistant Superintendent Schmull, and we presented a challenge to all Henry County schools. And that was for them to open up the doors for the lines of communication with their local library. And that's happened, hasn't it? Our librarians here today will tell you, all of a sudden, the schools are calling and say, "Hey, come to our school. We want you here." Also, we wanted to, you know, encourage other communities to help donate to summer programs. As you know, and what I heard today, statistics show that three out of four of those on welfare, 85% of unwed mothers, and 68% of those arrested are actually functionally illiterate. So we're specifically concerned about the financial impact the limited hours of the libraries will have on Henry County. And I heard that today as well. We all agree that these all go together. And many in our community have been hit hard. And they go to the local libraries, not just for the books, but for access to computers. They can do GEE, GED, GEE, I think that's a new one. There's all kinds of things that they can do on the computers, that they don't have access elsewhere. Adult education. Many of our students, if you go between 6:00 and 8:00 PM, that place is busy. It's hopping with our kids that are trying to do their research projects. So we need to have that available to them. We know that better schools means higher property prices, a more sustainable tax base. We all agree on that. So we're here to challenge you to help us think outside the box and make libraries more accessible. And I have three of our students here that would like to present something from Bethlehem Elementary. So if they might come up, would that be all right?
Sure.
Okay. He said it's bigger than I thought it was. And as you can see, it says, "Open the doors to our future." Children need summer programs. They need to go and access the libraries on more than just Monday through Thursday, and then the four hours on Sunday in McDonough. We need our libraries. And also, the children at Bethlehem, they had a little writing contest, and many of them wrote why the libraries were important to them. Do we have a moment for them to just pick one each and read one?
Sure.
Okay. And this is for you to keep. Plus, we have a stack of probably maybe 1,000 signatures supporting this.
Can you pull that microphone down a little closer? There you go.
The first... This was... I've never seen it. This one was from a kid named John Rorer. He wrote, "Dear officials, please let our libraries be open the weekends, especially in the summer, when there is no school. It would be really nice. Here are some of the, some reasons. It would let us kids go to read books more. A lot of kids would get smarter. Kids would enjoy reading books more during the summer. People could still learn. I hope you take this into consideration." The other one was written by another kid named Lila. "The local library is important to me, because I'm a huge fan of reading. I read every day, and I go to the library every month, because I pick out books, wait, could I pick out cool books? And I hope the local library doesn't close, because I love the library so, so much. I can even color, get on the computer, which is very, which is so fun. Please don't close the library." This one is from a little boy named Levi Mitchell. This one is from a little boy named Levi Mitchell. The library is very important to me. The library has free books. The kids in Locust Grove read the books in the library. The library has a summer program, and it's really fun. Some kids' moms can't afford stuff, so the kids go to the library. I read the book in the library. I read the books in the library. They are really cool. They also have books that are about animals in real life. So, can you please keep the library open? And then this one is from a girl named Chloe. Dear officials, hi, my name is Chloe. I would love it if we can have the library open on Saturdays, Fridays, and Sundays. I love to read. Now that school's ending, I need new books. I wish I had my local library open.
This is from myself, Dana Isabel Rice. I love reading books from our local library, but I feel sad, because most of my friends can't enjoy the library like I do. Their parents can only take them on the weekend, but the library's closed on the weekend. Please, I beseech you, open our libraries on Saturdays and Sundays. This one is from a girl named Kiri Jacobs. Dear officials, hi, my name is Kiri. One day, my mom went to the library on a Saturday. She was going to get a book for me, but it was not open. I really liked that book, but I didn't get it, because you were not open. So, please, open the library on Saturday and Sunday, so I can get that book. From Kiri Jacobs.
Thank you for listening, and we heard that over and over again from all people, that, you know, they went to the library, and an assistant principal from another elementary saw me the other day, and he said, "You know, when that challenge went out," it was funny, "my neighbor had just come to me and said, 'You know, I went to the library with my granddaughter, and it was closed.'" And so, it was just a normal day, why was it closed? So, I really feel if we think outside of the box here, I've already shared some suggestions with Commissioner Preston, there's ways that we can improve access, improve visibility, with spending very little money, and I know that's important, and also looking to encourage other communities like Mallard's Landing to step up to the plate and help fund things. And I know working together, we can do that. Thank you. Mr. Preston?
I have one quick comment, is that, first of all, Dr. Askew would be so proud of you guys. You know, in full disclosure, I have a daughter over at Bethlehem Elementary as well, and I can tell if Dr. Askew is able to watch this, or maybe watch the video later, she's going to definitely have a big smile on her face, because you guys represented the school very, very well, and it warmed my heart. I also, Darla, we've had a chance to talk about this, and, you know, I'd love for the, I can, some of my best childhood memories were from going in the summers to the libraries, and I do hope that maybe we get the library board and some of the others can talk about providing more access. I do want to brag on our libraries, one thing, because I've been so proud that they've embraced the new technology, with Kindles, with iPods, any of that stuff is now available. If you just go get a membership at your local library, and get out there and use it, you can do it all through the Internet, it's incredible, the resources that they're offering on that, but I concur with what you're trying to do, and I appreciate the community stepping up and doing that.
Then we will reach out to the communities in service, because I think that is the missing link there. We need our libraries, they're already in place, we, they have the training, and, you know, they can be reaching out to our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
We definitely appreciate y'all taking time to be here today, and the young folks, I'll always love having them come to the Board of Commissioner meetings, because they certainly interject a little more excitement than what we typically have on a given day, and it's good training for the future, for them as well. I know that there has been some questions in the last couple of weeks, there were some notices posted in the library, that there was a risk of libraries closing. I don't know where that came from, because we have not had any discussions about cutting library funding this year. I think someone had got some type of erroneous information. We're not closing any libraries.
That's great, that's great, sir.
But from the standpoint of the hours of operation, have you had an opportunity to go to the library board meeting and to share this with them? Because this board doesn't decide that. We have sort of an unusual relationship, because the library is partially state and it's partially county, but the management of the library system is under a state employee, Carolyn Fuller, and she's hired by the board, not by the Board of Commissioners, but by her library board. And they make all the decisions as far as the hours of operations and where their funds are allocated. So, if you haven't had an opportunity to meet with them, I would encourage you to take the same presentation, take the same spokesman as well, because I think that would be very effective to let them know how important it is to have those weekend hours, and I would really encourage you to do that, if you could.
I have been invited to the board, we have the Ladies of Mallard's Landing, and it's not just me, I represent a whole group of people that are wonderful. And yes, we will be going and suggesting more hours and things, but, and I've spoken to Carolyn Fuller many times as well. So, I think there was this perception that funds were going to potentially be cut for the, for the next year, so that's wonderful to hear that that's not the case. And we're going to go forward with more ideas, and try to really open this up and reach more, not just children, but adults. Everybody in our community can benefit from this.
Wonderful, and I just have to commend your organization, because a lot of times, we get the complaints, do something, do something, but if everyone would just get involved and try to make a difference in the community, it would be, we would accomplish so much more together. And so, I have to say, thank you so much for being involved in getting out and raising funds, and doing what you can to make Henry County a better place.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure, and we'll continue to do it.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you. If there's no further business to come before the board today, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holmes, second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.